This is William, hopefully your favorite videographer from Two Hats Publishing. I welcome you to another Two Hats special of community events. Let's look in and see what's really happening.
When we're going to get started, I'd like to welcome you to our five-year consolidated plan public hearing meeting. I am Shannon Williams, I'm in the Office of Budget with the Grand Administration Division. So tonight's presentation will provide an overview of our five-year consolidated plan and talk a little bit about our HUD budgets. Before I get started, I'd like to introduce some of our city representatives. We are joined tonight by many of our Community Development Commission members. And I'd like to take a moment, if that's okay, to go around and let the commissioners introduce themselves and give the district and our council members that they represent before we get started.
Hey, I'm Joe Ramirez, District One. I'm Scott Gray.
Sherry Mixon, District Seven.
Who is that?
Kevin Bell.
John Heseltine, District Thirteen, Jennifer Stoppa-Giggs.
Hi, good evening, my name is Elizabeth Callum, District Five, Charles Silverhall.
Hi, I'm Alicia Lewis, District Three, Jennifer Tim.
Brian Hassenbauer, District Ten, Adam McGee.
Betsy Kleinman, District Eleven, Emily Klein.
Christine Chol, District Twelve, Jane Gray. And when you have catching your eye guard, Mr. Bear, please like to introduce yourself there.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hi, everyone, it's Mia Huber, Vice Chair, CPG, and I'm Mayor's Law and Deputy, so I'm at large, member.
So we do have quite a few departments here who are represented to tonight to pay their questions that you have. If we could have some of the departments, if you'd like to just please stand and let us know what department you're from that are represented here tonight.
Marshall, Department of Labor.
That is our the school program, so the Department of City ESG.
Gloria McNatt, Housing and Marketing, everybody's action.
Our housing department.
Debbie Nogira, Housing.
Gloria, Department of the Office of Transportation.
And that is for most of our emergency, Community Grant, ESG, and our HOPO funds, or any other issues of home maintenance.
I'm Jessica Galish, I'm with the Office of Community Care.
I'm Stephen Walker, I'm three-one-one.
So yeah, I was about to get to Stephen in the back here, he is with the city on the go, city dads on the go. Okay, so we also, I do want to make sure that I thank all your residents, our citizens and residents coming out tonight. It's before, we're going to go through the handouts that you should have received, and I wanted to let you know that you do have in your handout, it will include the presentation. So, and I'm probably going to go through it fairly quickly because, I mean, most of you can read, we don't want to read it to you if we just give you a handout. But if there's anyone here who has something specific that you wanted to know, or like to ask, or want to introduce yourself before we get started, I want to make sure that if your question is in our presentation already, I want to make sure that I'm slow down and maybe address specifically what you had as we go along. Would anyone like to introduce themselves, any of our residents? Or tell us why you're here, or what organization you're representing?
You know, I'm some extra time, I represent Big 'em Soup Kitchen.
I'm Phil Gibson, I'm representing Southside Economic and Community Development, four persons. I'll go one, two, three.
And before I get too far, I want to also acknowledge my team, that in the Office of Budget, our grants team, we have our budget folks, AB, we call him AB, his name is Sis Yogi, Sis Yogi, Sis A, AB. And Budget Analyst, P. Heinz is also manager of our non-HUD grants. AB has all of our HUD funds. Then we have Marla Schumack, our HUD team, Mage Facette, who is on our other city grants. We have Marie, Amory, Emery. She's our intern from UT Dallas, she's interning in our office with the grant. Of course, we know Shanee, who is our Amory Specialist. And we have Justin Bolo, our program manager. The rest of the folks, can y'all stand up, because y'all may stand with the rest of them. Wayne Campbell, who is with our program staff. Our compliance team, we have the manager, Mr. Dotty. We have the compliance administrator, Brandon. And we have Shin, Sarah Peoples, compliant, and we have Tracy Hall. So, we have three parts to our division. We have the folks who do the budget, manage all the funds. We have the program people who do all of our reporting to HUD and all of our public documents. And then we have our compliance, who looks at the programs on the end to make sure that we're following all the rules. So with that, let's go through real quickly the handout that you have. I've mentioned everyone, hopefully you signed in, and if you signed in, you got this packet here. Wanted to go through that real briefly. So on the, to your left, on my packet, I want to especially bring your attention to these two forms. One is our community survey, just some information to get your input about the use of funds. Once we go through the presentation, you can read through, but we do want your input of how, what you think or disagree, or how well you approve or agree with some of the recommendations. And then we have our satisfaction feedback form. And we would really, really appreciate if you could get those back to us before you leave. Staff is here, you saw the staff is here, they'll be able to answer any questions you might have, but we really want those forms back. Your handout, again, we have a map of the city that shows many of our CDVG eligible areas. Now, but keep in mind, while the blue represents the entire area where the census tract is eligible for CDVG funds, the green is where there are eligible block groups. But, those are programs specific for areas. But most of the programs in our, that are administered by our funds are based on income and other specific criteria. So just because you don't live in one of the blue or the green areas does not mean that you're not eligible. And then we also have just some other information about if you are 501(c)(3), many of our programs, contracted programs, or you must be a 501(c)(3) to participate in those programs. And we also have, again, a copy of this handout. So I won't be very long, I'll try to go through it very briefly. It is a lot of information. As I said before, we're talking about our five-year plan, and then the one-year budget on that plan. In the web background, the City of Dallas, HUD provides various federal funds, and the City of Dallas receives four grants from HUD on an annual basis, and that's what makes up our consolidated plan. In order to be eligible for these funds, you have to have a population of 50,000 or more, and it is based on census data, both continued census data and the five-year American Community Survey data. The four grants that we will be talking about that make up the consolidated plan is the Community Development Block Grant, CDVG, the Home Investment Partnership Program, which we refer to as Home, Emergency Solutions Grant, ESG, and our Housing Opportunity for Persons with Age, A, our HOPO grant. What is the consolidated plan? It is a comprehensive analysis and a strategic plan that identifies our community needs, it prioritizes those needs, and gives details on how we will be going about to address those needs. Again, the list of identified needs there, nothing new, affordable housing, homelessness, poverty in our city, economic development, and the public infrastructure and public improvement type needs. The five-year plan covers a five-year planning period. Our current program expires, current five-year plan expires September 30th, 2019. In order to receive those four grants that make up the consolidated plan, we must have a plan, and that plan has, a five-year plan, and that plan has to be submitted to HUD. The new upcoming five-year plan will cover fiscal years 2019-20 through fiscal year 23-24. The first-year action plan, which is our annual budget, is due at the same time as our new five-year plan. Some of the requirements is that for the consolidated plan, is that our programs must promote fair housing opportunities to all of our residents regardless if they live in Dallas. As I said, many of our programs are income-based, and each year HUD provides us new income limits. The income limits that we have here are the most recent ones. They were effective June 1st of 2018, and they are updated annually. This slide just gives a visual of how our funds have drawn up and down over past 20-year history. As you can see, maybe about around 2004, we were up near total for the four grants, near $35 million. Now, 2019, over the years, those grants kind of have been reduced. So if we take a look at each of these individual grants, just a overview of them, CDVG in general is the most flexible of our four grants. Most people are familiar more with the CDVG grant. Not only is it the most flexible, it is, is this the larger grant of the four. Many of the eligible programs and services could include childcare, job training, housing, public infrastructure. And again, eligibility is based on specific program requirements, and it can include low and moderate income people who apply directly for services, say for our childcare, job training programs, or some of our housing programs, low-income areas, that's some of our public infrastructure. And when we say public infrastructure, that's many of our sidewalks, our curbs and gutters type projects. For our services, again, here you nonprofit 501(c)(3) organizations, you have to be a nonprofit. Most of our services are through nonprofits. And we have some for profit businesses, of course, some of our infrastructure projects, sidewalks, those are contractors, so they're not nonprofits. Our home grant, 100% of that fund must be used for housing activities. Again, eligibility is based on some of the specific programs, and include nonprofits, developers, and low-income individuals who are seeking financial assistance to purchase a home. Regulations require that 15% of those funds be set aside for our CHODOs, which are community housing development organizations. ESG, the Emergency Solutions Grant, 100% of those funds must be used to prevent homelessness or to assist those who are already homeless. Individuals cannot receive funds directly, they must be contracted through an organization, and again, that organization must be a nonprofit, 501(c)(3) is required. This chart just gives like a visual of some of the eligible services through our ESG grant, and then again, who the eligible clients can be for those services. Our fourth grant, which is our HOPO grant, again, 100% of those funds must be used to provide housing and support services to individuals and other family members who have a medical diagnosis and are low-income. For this program as well, individuals cannot receive funds directly, and the funds are contracted through a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. So, we're looking at developing our new five-year plan. So the approach for developing our new plan, five-year plan, is to use existing systems that are already in place and built off of the work that has already been accomplished. When we talk about existing systems, we talk about that includes the continuum of care, the Ryan White Planning Council. When we look at some of the existing strategies and policies that have already been accomplished and put in place by our city council, we have our housing policy that was approved in May of 2018, if we're in 1918. We have a poverty study that was initially submitted to the council in 2016, and we've continued to hear, and the council has continued to make efforts to address the populations here in our city. So our five-year plan, we look at consolidating all of this work that has already been done, and we put it in one document and present it back to HUD as a comprehensive look at the City of Dallas and various needs, and we will submit that back to HUD as a prescribed requirement. This is just a visual, pretty much the previous slide, gives you a visual, so you can see here that all the various works, things that have been going on, that many of you may have even participated in. Our market value analysis, the housing policy, our continuum of care, we're talking about the point in time, there's acronym PIT on one of the green labels, there's the point in time count, that looks at the number of homeless in our community. All of that data goes in together, consolidates effort, and is submitted to HUD in our consolidated So now we're going to look at each of the individual grants. Again, as I said, CDVG has the most flexible, most uses of all of our grants. So, under our public service category, the recommendation is to use our public services. And when we say public services, we mean those social services. That was the thing that you would normally think of, like our childcare services, our job training, those are services, human and social needs type programs. Again, the poverty study, the mayor's poverty task force identified nine drivers of poverty. So the recommendation is to use our public services dollars under CDVG to address those areas of poverty. This slide, 16, gives you the list of the nine drivers that was identified in that study. So the recommendation is to, let's use this, the recommendation is to use our CDVG public service dollars to address those drivers of poverty, and focus on reducing or eliminating those barriers to work. So that recommendation would be 50% of our funds would be used to award it to nonprofits for competitive proposal, and then those programs would address those drivers of poverty on the previous slide. And then half of our funds would be used for our city administration programs, including Amory and our childcare programs, which were also included in the poverty study as a bear to working parents. The regulations limit the amount of funds that can be used for these types of services to 15%. Again, under the CDVG housing category, the comprehensive housing policy provides for creation and preservation of housing throughout Dallas. And that study also, policy also identifies housing shortage of 20,000 units in Dallas. So the recommendation is to use our CDVG housing fund to further the efforts of our comprehensive housing policy. Public improvements dollars, those are our infrastructure, again, sidewalks, curbs, gutters, those type of improvements. So there was a study conducted by the University of Arlington that was presented through the council, I think in maybe November of this year, of 2018, and it found that from 1990 to 2016, the number of poverty and essentially concentrated areas of poverty, which is referred to as RECAPs, the census tract in our city increased from 18 to 36. So 105 of census tracts as a RECAP, if it had a population of 50% or more of non-white and a poverty rate of 40%. So what that study said is from 1990 to 2016, the City of Dallas areas of poverty increased. And the poverty rate is based on individuals living at or below the poverty line, again, back to that income limit. So in addition to these distressed areas, other characteristics of RECAP was that need for infrastructure improvements. And then again, there was a resilient study, another study, that talked about investing in neighborhood infrastructure for underserved neighborhoods. So the recommendation is to use our CDVG public improvement funds in those eligible areas, specifically our RECAP to improve the infrastructure there. And then, under our planning program oversight, that is the final category for our CDVG funds, we're going to use it for our fair housing activities, which is a requirement of our HUD funds, and to also for our program administration. Moving to our home grant, that grant is, as I said earlier, 100% is for housing activities. So the recommendation is to use our home grant to further the efforts of our comprehensive housing policy. For our Emergency Solutions Grant, the Office of Home Solutions proposed a contract strategy to address the issues of homelessness in our city. So the recommendation is to use the ESG funds consistent with the Homeless Solutions Strategy Plan. Why recreate, reinvent the wheel when that work has already been done, the housing strategy under these programs, they've already identified what the needs are, they prioritize those needs. This gives them an opportunity to put dollars to address some of those needs. The same with our HOPO program. Historically, these funds have been used in collaboration and consistent with our Ryan White. Our HOPO funds is about five to six million dollars each year. The Ryan White Planning Council looks at all of the needs for that target population. We have, we work with them, we're able to leverage our dollars. Ryan White goes up to maybe 14, 15 million dollars. So the recommendation is to continue to use our HOPO funds consistent with those priorities established by our Ryan White Planning Council, and with the needs identified in their comprehensive study for that HIV need assessment. When we look at this year for our consolidated plan, we received about 28.5 million dollars. This is just a chart that shows you how that 28.5 million dollars breaks out across those four grants, with CDVG being the larger, that 14.8 million, our home, 5.9. This year for ESG, we received 1.2 million, and our HOPO was 6.6. And looking forward to our budget for our fiscal year 2019-20, the grant amounts are not available yet. We will assume level funding so that we can go ahead and get started with the budget development process, because there is a timeline that we have to, need to submit our information to HUD in a timely manner. So we go ahead and get started with that budget development process based on level funding, and as we move through the process, once we get our final numbers, we just make that adjustment be up or down based on actual amount at that time. The timeline, so right now, tonight starts the first of our public input meetings. There are ten more planned for the, during the month of January. February 28th is the last day that we can receive your comments. And that is the blue form, Chris, is that the blue one? That is that blue form. We really appreciate getting them tonight, but they are also available online, and you can mail them in, fax them in to us as well. In March, we, this commission will receive the city manager's recommendation for our 2019-20, 2019-20, I said it that way, can I get it? For our 2019-20 budget, we will present that proposed budget to this commission at their first meeting in March. During the month of March, the commission will review the budget and make their, provide their input. At their April meeting, this commission will make their recommendations and or amendments to the city manager's budget that will go to the city council. In April and May, the city council will review the budget, just the manager for the pair, and the input from our citizen advisory committee, the Community Development Commission. In May, we will have preliminary adoption, and that will also start a public review period. So, once the commission, the city manager presents its recommended budget to the commission, the commission reviews it and provides their input, both go to the city council. The council provides its input, and then it goes again to the citizens, to our residents, for review. You will have 30 days to review it, re-advertise it in the paper. At the council meeting, you will have opportunity to review all of the recommendations and provide any input or comments that you would like before the final adoption in June. Once the final approval in June, we submit the plan to HUD, and the plan begins October 1st each year. So, how do you participate in the development process? Again, you have opportunity for our written comments, the blue form that is in the packet. You can bring it to any of our A-level meetings, you can meld it in, again, like I said, it's online, or you can give it directly to anyone in our office. Verbal comments can also be provided to our commission that meets monthly, and on the first Thursday of each month at 6 o'clock, or you have an opportunity to speak at any of our meetings or the city council. And this next slide just provides some input, more information about how you can submit your comment forms to us. Submission of a comment form does not warrant funding. For those agencies and organizations that are looking to do business for the city, you must register as a vendor. So this provides information about how to go online and to register as a vendor. There's also contact information for our Office of Procurement. You are notified once there's a solicitation or need for services. That information is emailed out to you if you are registered vendor by the commodity code you register at, but it is also advertised in the Dallas Morning News and on the city These are our social media handles, contacts for additional information about our program. So that completes our prepared presentation. You are available for any questions that you might have from anyone. Great, everybody, everything clear, fine, no questions? Yes.
Do you have any sort of overlay between the, I guess, the approved census tracts and the city's MBA code code census tracts?
There's available online. Is it on?
I know it's on the FER side, so planning and urban development.
On what? If you go onto the city's website under department, it is planning and urban design, and that overlay is available on that website. Yes, ma'am. Mr. Bolo, I say you can go through the mic so that everyone can hear your questions, and we can have a record.
Good evening, I'm the representative here for the Neighborhood Association in West Dallas. I just wanted to ask you a question when you were on HOPA, how would you pronounce it?
The HOPO?
Mm-hmm. And you mentioned these 501(c)(3), who are they? How would you identify those? How do you for the public?
How would you know what agencies they are?
Any difference?
Um, HOPA, they are online. If you go to Community Development.
Okay.
Oh, Shanee is waving a flag in your package, the yellow handout.
Okay.
The last page, page five.
Page five. So this handout includes all of our programs that are currently funded for fiscal year 2018-19, and it will give you the agencies that are providing services, a brief description and a contact number. So for, I'm sure, yeah, page five.
Yeah.
Where it says HOPO activities, starting with number 21.
All right, I'll see that.
Those are all the agencies and contact numbers.
Okay, let me see, I have something else.
Ma'am?
I have another question.
Oh, sure.
When you were on page 18 of your handout, the top slide, number 17, I was wondering how would you measure the success or failure of these organizations?
So each organization, when the proposal is bid out, performance goals are set in the proposal, and then once an agency becomes successful, a contract is developed, and it will include those benchmarks for all the support measures for each contract that is measured on a monthly basis. When they submit, any organization that's funded through the city, when you submit a request for payment, it includes accomplishment data. So that's reviewed on a desk basis, on a monthly basis. Then you have the department who does onsite with the organization, and then we have staff that does the monitoring.
And that information is for public access. And that information is for public access as well.
Actually, each year, we have a CAPR, which is acronym for our Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. So, at the end of each fiscal year, we go back through every program, and that provides what was proposed for that fiscal year and what the actual performance is. And so, we just presented the report to HUD on the twenty-eighth. You can go online, and that, under Community Development, on that bar, and it'll say Consolidated, the paper, uh, Consolidated Annual, wrong word, but it's CAPR, and you can see for every program that was funded last year, what they proposed, what was actual, and you can see that.
On page twenty-two, when you mentioned the recommended approach for home, um, I was wondering what, who are you referring to? Are these section eight vouchers or what?
No, we are, okay, so when you look at, um, page three, and the handout there, those are our home activities. So, you see that we have, uh, our Chodo Development Loans, we have home buyer assistance, where you can get down payment assistance to purchase a new home, and we have some development programs. So, when we talk about our home funds, the city uses those funds to develop new housing. So, you can be an individual who wants to, to get a new home, and you need down payment assistance, or you can be a developer wanting to build new housing, or rehab existing housing to provide more housing here in the city. So, that home fund, that whole grant is used for housing.
So, when, when those developers use taxpayer funds, do they, that means they receive subsidies from the city, so therefore they have certain requirements to, um, assist with low income, affordable housing?
The Housing Director is here, nodding his head to speak to that, but I don't want him to speak, the rule comes down to more detail.
Yes ma'am, now, even though you're the Director of Housing and Neighborhood Authorization. So, the, the home grant that the, uh, City of Dallas receives, which is about six million dollars on an annual basis, is used on a competitive basis, um, to award funds to builders of housing. It could be apartments, it could be, um, single-family homes, but any, 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 um, housing that they build comes with the requirement that it serves, um, people who, who make a certain income, right? And right now, that income goes up to what we call eighty percent of the area median income, who are family of four, I think it's about seventy-three thousand dollars a household. Just to give you an idea.
Some people tend to say things like, there's so many things built into that, that, uh, even if you apply, you aren't qualified, it may be, uh, a record, or maybe debt, or source of income.
So, so, so with this program, and I have one of my staff here, her job is to go out and make sure that when those developers submit those applications and build those homes, that the people who, uh, are supposed to be benefiting from those funds are actually living in those units. She knocks on doors, she digs through files, she looks at W twos, she can tell you the whole nine of, of, of what she does, but, um, we, we verify that those funds are doing what they're supposed to, um, what they were allocated for.
I don't want to take up all the time, thank you.
Hi, my name is Evelyn Mayo, I'm legal aid in Northwest Texas. Um, my question is also on slide eighteen, for the CBG housing category, will there be any new programs, or are you just saying that the same existing home wire assistance program will be the ones that just receive additional funding?
There's the same title, but kind of new, the, the requirements have been changed, but the, the programs will still be repairing homes and making new homeowners under CBG. But the criteria has changed for those programs. That's what we were talking about initially, it was maybe twenty thousand dollar limit, now there's more funds available to complete those payers. So, the programs and the folks have changed, even though the names are, you know, it used to be down, mortgage assistance, now it is down payment assistance, but it is still financial assistance to home made home. But the limits are different, the programs are different, and he wants to talk about that.
Yeah, that, that makes sense, and I only ask because a lot of the neighborhoods I work in, I've found, um, these programs fall short when it comes to homes that don't have clear title or a historic district, there's some additional barriers to actually qualifying for these grants, that's why I'm asking.
Right, so, so, so the, um, Community Development Block Grant Program's been in existence since nineteen seventy-four, and it hasn't changed significantly since then. So, a number of the requirements that we have for these grant funds are based on those federal requirements. Having a clear title is, is, is one of the first requirements that we have to, um, assist a homeowner, right? Um, we do work with groups like Legal Aid, and the University of North Texas Law School, and, and, and others, to, to assist people in clearing their titles, but, um, the legal, um, guidance that we've been provided is that as the investor in the home, the city, it's a conflict of interest for the city to help, um, the homeowner clear that, clear that title. So, um, we usually work with third parties to do that.
Okay, and my last question, um, on the home grants and Chodos, is it only Chodos, or is it also CVCs that could be eligible for receiving funding?
So, so, are you referring to the Chodo set aside?
Yes.
Gotcha. So, so, any nonprofit housing developer can be classified as a community housing development organization. The term Chodo, as we, as we call it, that's, that's the acronym, can be assigned to any nonprofit housing developer, so, so long as they, 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 they meet the, the basic requirements.
Okay, thank you.
And we need more, so if you know some, please send them already.
I'll send them. I did have one other question. Are y'all going to write off those links on the homes you've already repaired under that old home repair program, being that you did away with it, and now you have to pay money to get it off? Thank you.
So, the, the leads that are attached to, um, each of the homes that we assist, um, come with certain requirements that have to be met. And again, this, this lady sitting here, Gloria McNack, that's one of the things she's spent a good portion of her day doing, is reviewing the various homes that we've assisted over the years, and ensuring that they have satisfied the terms needed to clear the lead. Um, in some cases, she can't make that conclusion, and just because it's been X number of years doesn't mean that the lead will be released. But I'll say, um, in the majority of the cases, where somebody's stated the lead, it's just a matter of going through the due diligence, making sure we have the records in place to release those leads. And, um, we're actually, um, ramping up some of our efforts with, with hiring to, um, have more people working on releasing those leads.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Um, I hope my question made sense. On, all of your grants are any of them set aside for, um, soup kitchens, like to feed people? Because just from us being around and speaking with the homeless, um, population, you know, it's more than just putting somebody in a home, you know, they have to have the programs for their mental enhancement to catch up with it, and, you know, people still hungry and poop the top. So, that's another, um, two forms to add, is there funding set aside for that?
See, all of the funds are competitive, they're bid up, they're proposals, so if they're, I don't know that one, there's a set aside specifically for that.
Okay.
It is, you have to be a nonprofit organization providing services, but I don't know that there is anything specific for, for food, I think most of them are services, uh, social services, childcare, you're having, um, food programs for...
Sorry, she's teaching me, but there's a lot of community-based partnerships that really tend to step in.
Here, here.
You guys have the mic.
Jessica Galishaw, and this is the Director's, I mean, she's the Director for our Office of Community Care.
Sure, um, so our office has, um, a, a good deal of the CBG funds that really support kind of public service and kind of nonprofit type work. Um, and while we don't have anything specific for food, for soup kitchens from this funding stream necessarily, um, what we find is that, uh, food donations and food access is actually a really great way for us to engage with the community, and we always find kind of readily available help and support from networks of religious-based organizations, neighborhood groups, community members, um, that help us, um, when it comes to programming for our clients that are in need. So, specifically right now, in that bucket, we don't have a soup kitchen necessarily that's being funded, other than by components of some other programs that may have that attached to them as part of their comprehensive services.
Okay, and I, and my reason for asking is because with us providing food for people that are homeless, they're in search of housing, so that leaves all of those connected, so that's why I asked that question. And we do have a housing program that we'd like to implement, but we have to start where we started from, which is food, so that's why I asked that question.
Do you work with homeless?
Do we work with homeless?
I mean, are you, do you work through with the Community of Care?
Uh, no.
The homeless network for the city.
Well, I, I've spoken with Office of Homeless Solutions, the Director is Monica, and a few people from that side, but other than that, we've just been in the shelters ourselves, or they have emergency shelter places that, like churches that provide, and we provide food for them, and all of that, but it's still a lot of people that, like you say, you're twenty thousand units, so...
But Tom, like, if you're in touch with, um, Office of Homeless Solutions, that would be your best resource for those people?
All right, all right, thank you.
Now, I can, I can believe you do have a, a list coming out.
Gotta go right, right.
Gotta go tight. It's not the Consolidated, uh, Consolidated Plan, so...
Hold your mic. Oh, sorry.
So, um, in terms of food for the homeless, um, the only thing that is available under the Consolidated Plan Funds is through the Emergency Solutions Grant, but that food has to be in association with the shelter, the operation of an actual emergency shelter, so it doesn't fund food for those who are living on the street. It's just, uh, you know, how it's structured. Um, the Office of Homeless Solutions does have a competitive bid coming out later this spring, which is some general fund dollars that are, is targeted to the homeless population, and it's fairly broad, so when that does come out, you may want to take a look at that, be sure to register as a vendor, so that you'll get notification of that bid.
Okay, okay.
Good question, I can fill that one, but it's good.
Good afternoon, good evening, my name is McKenna Cole, I'm a radio broadcaster from Dallas, Texas. Um, I have lived here for fifteen years, I came from Austin, Texas. I moved here because you guys are so progressive in the way you took care of your homeless people, and the way that you addressed each other as friends and family whenever I went to your community events. Y'all, please forgive me, because I'm getting excited. Um, but God told me to come by here and tell a couple of things about what's going on in the city of Dallas, and our health as a city is not well. We are not communicating with each other. Um, there's infractions in every department in the city, but we're not addressing them, we're not talking about them. So, today, we're going to talk about homelessness and the things that deal with that, because that's the basic need that we all must have in order to be successful, right? We all need a home. The poor population in Dallas, Texas only makes forty-eight thousand dollars a year, that's the real fact. I don't know who does fact-checking here, but I've done it for twenty years for Dell Computers, Home Depot, Brent BCS, and multitude of companies where I have helped them realign their corporate infrastructure to help be better for their community, for whoever they are serving. That's what's needed. Before we start building out any more money, we need to start fact-checking everyone, and how that money's being spent, and who is really being helped. Because I drive down Kent Street to my church, I'm starting to get so excited, because I'm so hurt by how homeless people are outside, and you're telling me that we don't have twenty thousand, twenty thousand places for them to stay, and there's a building across the street that's empty, that house two thousand people. I drive by every day going to my church at Kingdom War, and I pray that one day that place will be a resource center where people can be helped, and the start of them reclaiming their lives, and being brave, and stepping out of the shadows of homelessness can be really addressed. Because I worked in corporate for twenty years, and I lost my job twenty-four months ago. My income was reduced to seventeen hundred dollars, I have almost been evicted four times from my home. I worked twenty years. I cannot get social security benefits because I don't look sick, but I almost had a heart attack at my job because my job worked me so hard, I refused to leave because I needed overtime money. I almost left my girls. I almost had a heart attack, and they rushed me to the hospital for my corporate job that I gave everything to. I live in an all-bills-paid apartment, it costs one thousand thirty-four dollars, they tow my truck every three months, I have to pay for that. They evict me, they put false charges on my eviction. I can't argue with it because the judge won't listen, I can't argue with it because City of Dallas, uh, Legal Aid can't help me. These parameters and red tapes y'all create don't help us. What do you have, you said it was developed in nineteen seventy-eight, sir, we need an improvement, and you count how many years that is that you want us to... y'all want us to, um, go through your programs and do what you want, but you don't give us no way to do it. I want to get a house, I have to fill a vacancy to keep my apartment, so guess what, now I'm behind the rat race for three to five more years trying to get a house. Develop a program that lets me have a house because I'm a good citizen, that lets me have a house because I have money, that lets me have a house that doesn't tell me, well, because your income's not three times the rent, you're out of here. A seventy-four-year-old woman got punched out of her house last week, in a band, Village South Dallas. I posted, and I posted for that woman, until she got fifteen thousand dollars and it go funny that me and Lady Savage, oh, we make real music, we posted for that lady for two whole days, but you know, someplace to be. That shouldn't be, it's on you, it's on me, it's on all of us, it's our challenge to change the infrastructure that's not helping our cities. We are sick, and we need to help develop a better quality of life, but every American deserves a home.
Hi, my name is Jeanette Pearson, I work for a nonprofit Portfolio Resident Services. Um, we're the largest third-party provider of resident services in the country, so we're providing resident services at all, we're always from tax credit communities, mostly across Texas. Um, and just going over the information in your proposal, in this blue survey, I don't see anything specifically for the elderly, so did I miss something, or is it not part? I understand the City of Dallas has its Senior Affairs Division, but I don't see anything on your asking me how I feel about services specifically for the elderly.
For this year, those programs for, for our seniors will be, the recommendation is to move them to our general fund, they will no longer be a part of our Community Development Funds. Right now, the senior program, if you look on the yellow, um, handout, um, page one, number three, it's our senior services, so...
So, is that more or less money, if you're moving?
Equal money.
Okay.
Which is going to move the program, because, again, the city has been looking at trying to focus our CBG dollars to address the poverty, so with our CBG funds, and to get engaged more of our nonprofit community partners in those funds, so those senior services, the recommendation is to move them to the general fund, take them out of the federal funds. City is committed to those senior programs, and, you know, federal funds and models will go up and down. So, in order to kind of maximize the opportunity to address our drivers of poverty, which were those nine, the senior program is being recommended to move to our general fund dollars, so they will no longer be in this grant.
Okay, which I understand. I guess the challenge, I'm thinking right now as you're saying that, is that there are tons and tons and tons of seniors that are still in poverty. We serve seniors every day that are still not able to pay their rent and get their medicine, or pay their rent and get their food, and that type of deal. So, it feels a little bit of a disservice that you would take them out of the big equation and kind of set it aside. I know the city of Dallas is a huge place... I know the city of Dallas is a huge place, and you guys do everything that you can for the aging population, but there are so many aging people in our city, it just feels like it should be more on the forefront and not really on the back burner?
Well, a couple of things with that. So, um, the seniors are, while they are not a specific set aside, they would be eligible for any service, any service, uh, for like our financial assistance, uh, for any program. They would be eligible regardless, not, there's not a special set aside for them.
Okay.
For the particular senior services now, currently, we have 300,000 that's listed here, and then there's a separate total application for them in the general fund. What this recommendation does is move all the money to one place. So it doesn't cut their program, so it's just changing the sources of funds for them. So they would still have, um, I, I wanna say it's about, uh, there is a specific set aside for seniors in the general fund. I would wanna guess at the amount, maybe a million dollars or so? So that won't change, it will just go up. The manager has needed to just transfer in that fund. And then they are still eligible for any program that is, so if a senior had, so if we're looking at one of the drivers of poverty, let's say, financial literacy. If a senior wanted to go to that program, they have access to all of the programs, and then there's the specific set aside for them on top of that.
Okay, I guess the only challenge, and I don't wanna challenge everything that you say that's good, is that a lot of times the programs that are designed for families don't really fit the needs that the seniors have. So in a family situation, that may be something geared towards, like you said, homebuyership and getting them ready to buy a home and that type of thing, whereas a senior's already done that, and maybe they're in a different place, and now the whole staff is getting in line to talk to me.
So, so, good, good comment. So, so one of the things that, that I'll point out, the typical profile of someone who, who applies for a homebuyer assistance loan is a, um, a family typically, a first-time homebuyer. The typical profile for someone who applies for home repair is typically a senior citizen. Those are the folks who have nowhere else to turn, so they come to City Hall asking for help to repair their homes. So I would say the majority of, of, um, homeowners that need support, uh, in, in repair, home repairs are, are seniors.
Okay, thank you for that.
Um, and I just wanted to talk a little bit about what the senior services, kind of what the core function is in the Office of Senior Services, which is within the Community Care, um, office. Um, we have, uh, what we really specialize in doing there is that we actually have a group of caseworkers who are, who are really experienced and skilled specifically in working with seniors, um, and helping them to navigate the whole host of complicated and complex program applications, processes, and policies, both within city services that exist such as home repair. I mean, we, our staff has literally helped seniors to actually fill out their home repair applications, helped them to, you know, go down the hall and request that, helped them to bring their, gather their information. Our staff helps them navigate transportation issues such as, you know, applying for the DART para-transit program. Our staff will help them, you know, fill out paperwork and ensure their eligibility for a whole host of programs, both city programs, but also programs with external partners, with nonprofit providers, um, federally-funded programs, state-funded programs. And so really what the, what the kind of specialty that the team does is actually helping to make sure that these barriers, because a lot of these programs, they're really complicated, they're difficult to get into, the application's tough, it's a long follow-up, sometimes you have to do it online, sometimes you have to mail in this piece and do this piece online. So we really try to specialize in supporting our seniors in navigating that whole host of services. So, um, you know, we have always, we've always kind of had that split in terms of having caseworkers that are funded on the general fund, and we've had caseworkers that are funded on, um, CDVG. And then we're doing a lot of distinct work in terms of helping seniors navigate, um, certain systems and services. Now also on the general fund, we actually have some specific funding, um, that targets some specific programs and needs related to, um, employment services, related to, um, the, um, related to transportation support, and some other things. And then also there's the ombudsman program, which is a program that is really designed to get out and ensure the safety, respond to concerns around registered nursing home facilities in the community, do spot checks, make sure that those places are safe, and that's something else that we support. Um, but really, I think, um, I just kind of wanted to explain, um, that, that's kind of what that role is, is really specialized in helping that population. It's not necessarily just this huge subset of programs just for the population, but it's about helping them navigate what's out there.
Okay, thank you very much.
It's such a different answer for the program people have the budget.
Appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I have two phone questions. So one, I, I work with this community development corporation that is new to City of Dallas, and I noticed that there are only five CHODOs that are listed for the City of Dallas that I saw. I saw. There's also a list of other CDCs in the area that are already working with the City of Dallas on numerous projects. But is there an audit process for them, or do they have to submit an annual audit, so we know what they've already completed, and if they're in, doing due process to the community that they're working in? Some CDCs are actually saying that they're doing all these host of things, right? And I don't see the validity in that. Like, I don't, I don't see that they're actually doing the work that they're saying that they're doing. There's an audit process on the back end, and if so, is that, is it listed anywhere we get to it?
So, I, I, I think it really depends on whether or not they're receiving city funds. Certainly to the extent that any of these community development corporations that you're speaking of are receiving, um, city funds, then the city has an obligation to, um, uh, review how they've used those funds, reviewing their files, doing at a minimum a, a desk review of that. Um, to the extent they're not getting city funds, then we wouldn't have any oversight over them. Um, to, to your point about, about the CHODOs, there's actually only three CHODOs that are currently certified. And, um, one of the, um, challenges that we've had is convincing community development corporations, uh, nonprofit housing developers to become CHODOs, because there is a lot of red tape. There's a lot of paperwork that you have to go through, hoops that you have to jump through to receive the designation. Um, I'm actually looking, bringing on a, um, compliance consultant who will work with me to train nonprofits on how to navigate the process so that they too can become CHODOs. Right? At one point in time, we had about 20 CHODOs in the city. In a city of this scale, we should have at least that, right? So we've got some work to do there.
And the, and the second question was, um, I had my mother here, but she had to leave. Um, she lives in the 75216 area, which is District 4, um, that feeds off of South Oakland area. We have seen an influx of senior citizens who have received Maryland on their door or different developers coming in and trying to tell them, "I will fix your house." And we just ran into this earlier this morning. Um, "I'll fix your house if you, you know, can, to tell me about the land that's adjacent to your home." Um, they're offering seniors, you know, $15,000 cash if they will give up their property, give up their home. These seniors do not have access to attorney, they don't have access to people who they feel can fix their homes. Um, and they've been there for, you know, 30, 40 years. $15,000, they look good, and so, but we're trying to help them. So with your process with housing, they need their homes fixed, but some of them don't know what you guys offer. So what are you doing to get into the community? Because some of them can't make it to, basically say, a recreation center. They can't, you know, they don't hear about these programs. What are y'all doing in the community to get them out there and let them know what their rights are? Because some of them are losing their homes through not paying taxes, liens, they don't understand taxes as their, that information. So what are you doing to get them in to know about that?
So that's a little bit of a trick question, right? Because you, you, you're speaking from an advocacy role, right? Um, and, and we certainly don't act it as, um, as advocates. We support ad, ad, advocates, um, but, but we don't act as, as the advocate. Um, what I will say is that we, we publicize our programs through local libraries so that those who can't make it to City Hall or don't get on the computer can be aware of, of, of our programs. Um, we regularly do, uh, uh, radio announcements, um, to, to, to make, um, residents aware of programs. And, um, if, um, we work with the, um, Community Prosecution Office, which is, um, directly tied to, um, we're, we're working with some of the residents that you're speaking of, and between the community prosecutors, prosecutors, and the, um, code compliance inspectors, they make referrals to us. Right? Um, so those are our folks who are sort of on the ground, in communication with homeowners, uh, and certain communication. And also, no government agency should take anybody's home because they cannot pay their taxes, especially the elderly. No one, no agency, government of federal or state agency should take somebody's home away because they cannot pay their taxes. Here, this is one of the only nations in the world that does that. Any more?
Thank you.
Uh, sir, my name is Greg Clennett. Uh, just a resident of the City of Dallas. Could you give me your name and position again? I just forgot that.
Yes, I'm David Noguera. I'm the director of the Housing and Neighborhood and Vitalization Department.
Okay, good. Uh, earlier someone mentioned the fact that they're one of the impediments to, uh, people accessing some of these funds and services, is they don't have a clear title. And I understand you to say that the city, because of a conflict of interest, cannot work to clear up these cloudy titles?
Yes.
And you also, I understand you also to say that there are third parties that do that?
Correct.
Do you know who they are?
Yes, I, I, I mentioned a few that, that we work with. Um, we play, uh, the University of Texas Law School.
Oh, I, I was gonna say, I would think this would be an ideal place for law students to clear up, uh, titles. Well, so they actually do that. Does the S U B Law School do that?
I'm not sure. Do you know if we have a relationship with that?
Texas Western?
We have a relationship, we have, and I use S U B a while, we've been using U N T.
Texas Western, okay. Well, that's just good. Now, uh, also, do you have a card, by the way? Can I get a card? Do you?
Yes.
Uh, you have these programs that, uh, help down payments and utilities and repairs?
Not utilities, buildings and maintenance.
Oh, and maintenance, okay. Of this particular bill of new, uh, housing, do any of them pay animal or taxes?
Do any of them pay?
Animal or taxes, property taxes?
Oh, no. No, we don't pay, we don't pay the property taxes.
No, no, not me. Do they have, is a homeowner responsible for a, is a homeowner actually have, have, okay? Are houses evaluated so low that they incur no property taxes, or do they incur some property taxes that the homeowner is responsible for?
So here's the city, here's the city, uh, senior, uh, housing, a home, senior homeowner, there's an exemption on the first of 90,000?
Ninety-two.
I'm sorry?
Ninety-two thousand?
No, the, the homeowner, the exemption for a senior is at 65, isn't it? Um, I don't, I, I hear.
They just raised it to 90,000.
Right.
So say a senior is 65, and their home value is $100,000, the City of Dallas exempts that first 90,000, so he'll be assessed with his own remaining.
10,000, wow, okay. Um, okay.
Hi, I'm Taylor Slovak. I represent, uh, District 9 on the N O K Community Center Board. I was wondering if you could speak a little bit more on the competitive proposal process for those 501(c)(3) users nonprofits that are applying for the, um, CDVG funds. What is that like? What is the decision-making process? Who's over that, and how much, um, transparency is there for the community, what that process is like?
For housing, for c, uh, 501(c)(3) that are applying for housing funds or other funds?
So on slide 17, um, the recommendation is that 50% of the funds will be awarded to nonprofits through the competitive proposal process. What is that process like?
So the, the nine values of poverty, once the budget is set, programs will be designed around these nine, where those are. There is a scope of work that's written of what the expectations are. The city will prepare a solicitation for those agencies that are registered with the city to provide, so let's say, financial literacy. And the city, based on that commodity code, through our procurement office for financial literacy, that proposal is let out to the communities and passed through paper, is very public. There is a date set where a pre-proposal conference, where those interested in responding have an opportunity to come in, ask your questions, get those answers. Then a date is set for when those are awarded. During that time, the department, now those programs depend on the department that's administering that. Many of them will be in the Office of Community Care, where social services, human services are. There may be some through our department, after school, whatever. A committee is formed. Many of them are, it may be one person who is aware of what the federal regulations that relate to the compliance. You may have some community experts who did not submit proposals. The criteria for that evaluation and ranking is included in that R I P. So they go through that process, they evaluate if they're awarded. Very public process, and then you can also, uh, request after award. So if I submit a bid and I'm not successful, you can, over record, you can request a C B. It's very public process. But typically, staff will just assist you if you have it. But that's the way it is. But it varies based on the type of program that comes out.
Thank you.
But be sure to register as a vendor, so you get some of the proper information that you want.
Thanks, Karen.
Good evening, my name is Joel Motega. I apologize I was a little bit late. I don't know if you guys already covered this, but as many of you may have seen in the news, uh, Trump finally signed an executive order for opportunity zones. And I'm just curious of how, you know, that's gonna affect the city. Uh, it, it's providing up to 0% capital gains, deferment for, I think, almost 10 years for some of these large, they're gonna be large investment, uh, companies. My concern is, is, you know, just, for lack of a better term, it almost seems when you kind of go through it, it's like a glorified gentrification project. Uh, I'm, I'm gonna read, I'm gonna quote here from Dallas News. "Dallas gave Texas Governor Greg Abbott a list of 52 census tracts for possible inclusion of the program stretching from near the northwest city boundaries to the southern border with Lancaster." Quote, "We submitted the kitchen scene almost, Joe Ben Heaven, who has made a mind growing South Initiative. Abbott is on record as saying that the program can, quote, 'attract billions in investment and economic growth to cities across Texas,'" end quote. Then selected 15 census tracts in Dallas, the majority of them south of Interstate 30, and this program is, uh, uh, suggesting, reposing to affect majority African-American lower-income communities. I'm just wondering how the HUD plays in that. Do, is there a go-between, or is this directly through federal agencies that have been appointed under the executive order? I'm not, I'm not 100%.
That's, that's.
Or is that coming?
As well. So I, I don't have that answer.
Okay.
We do have your comment, and we're gonna, we're gonna get your information?
Yes.
Get your, so that I can get your specific question, and we'll ask around and get that. That is not part of this, and that, I, I'm not.
It was recently signed, so it's been in the works for a while. I'm just curious if it's trickled down, and, you know, they, you guys have some inkling of how that's, you know, how that's gonna be handled and distributed? Because Greg Abbott's already spoke on it and identified the zones.
This is just the goal. He may have some information he'd like to share in the goal. We'll have to get something too.
Okay.
A lot of ones to share.
No, no issue. It's premature.
I'm not absolutely sure about.
Absolutely. And I'll talk to you afterwards, okay? Awesome.
Hi. My name is Tom Irving. I'm a resident of Dallas. Is the current budget and expenditures available online, so we can kind of see how the money's been spent and passed, so we can get an idea of how we might want to see it spend in the future?
Yes, sir. Um, if you go to departments, the city's website, Departments, Community Development, you will, all of our documents are online.
you will, all of our documents are online. So the annual action plan will be the budget, and then that CAPER document is the end. So for two thousand fifteen, sixteen, you'll see the action plan, which is our budget, and then you'll see the two thousand fifteen, sixteen CAPER, which is the back end. This is what we said we would do, this is what actually happened, and all of that is available online on the community development website.
Okay, thank you. And the other question is, uh, looks like none of the funds are available directly to individuals, they go through organizations, uh, not, not-for-profit developers, et cetera, um, which makes them kind of a gatekeeper. So does the City of Dallas provide oversight to make sure the gatekeeper is following all the rules?
Absolutely. Now, some programs are provided direct assistance to individuals, some of them do, but then others, um, they, we have both. But absolutely, and not only are we required to monitor and provide oversight to the individuals that we co-contract with, or that we provide direct services to, we're also monitored by HUD themselves, and the, each year, the City of Dallas is required to have a single audit, which is an independent audit that comes in to look at us, to make sure that we are also following the rules. So there's quite a bit of monitoring, you know, you can't.
Okay, thank you.
Be there. We have our numbers.
Excuse me. I'm Phil Gibbs, I just wanna piggyback on what he just mentioned. Uh, you advocated earlier that you did have some individual opportunities for streets or whatever. What about businesses, the small businesses? Can you address that for us?
Our community development funds, we do not have, we have a revolving loan business loan program through our People Fund right now. The organization is People Fund, I think, mm-hmm, turn it, fourteen, uh, page two, um, like, uh, item number nine. Those are where, uh, small businesses can receive, uh, loans. Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I was in yellow. I'm talking here. And then the city, uh, number nine, our small business loan program, and then we have the Office of Economic Development, which has a whole business that are funded by HUD that also provide assistance as well. Before we go, would you like to, our City Hall on the go, real quick, let's, um, I meant to ask him earlier before he got so late, but he can close us out if he doesn't want to come. Share with us some of the great things going on with City Hall on the go.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Stephen Walker, I'm with Dallas Three One One. We have a, a community outreach program, uh, for Three One One, called Dallas City Hall on the Go. Basically, we have a technology truck that takes the services that, that we offer here at City Hall. Uh, you know, the old tradition of when they come downtown, stand in line, get a birth certificate, whatever your business might have been, all of that is pretty much online now. And so we take that truck out and we go out almost every day, we go out Tuesday through Saturday, to community locations. Apparently, we go to libraries, but a lot of the tech centers around the city as well. We come home to your, to your primewatch meetings, your homeowner group meetings. I'll give you my information if you even want to find out how to follow up and get us at one of your meetings. Um, but there, the truck, we offer the assistance that you would generally come in downtown and stand, stand in line again. So, uh, those things that you can do online, whether it's pay the parking bill, or, like I said, order your birthday, get birthday standing in line all day, taking time out of your day, come downtown and pay the parking, we offer that assistance right to our truck. And again, uh, if you're not aware of what Three One One is, it is your twenty-four hour connection to the city, to the city, is your one call, one number of calls to the city. So if you wanna report that your trash got mixed, or some potholes need to be addressed, or there's loose dogs in the neighborhood, any of those kinds of general concerns, you can call us. But a lot of what we do is informational web as well. About half of our calls are just people asking about programs like this. So we're kind of, we're not the expert, but we are those who have the general knowledge to say, "This program, let me refer you over to this number and call this department," or maybe something that we can just put a request in and have somebody come in and help. But I wanted to make y'all aware that if you see us in the community. Um, and we have changed the name of our, uh, Three One One app. It is much easier nowadays to use a smartphone app than it is to pick up a phone, phone takes a minute, and you may be on hold, which has been a, a problem with us here at Three One One for some time, but we, we have finally hired a lot more staff, and we have produced our whole time. That being said, the name of our app, it used to be, uh, Three One One Dallas, and it is now called Outward Dallas. It is far more, um, you have far more options with it than you had with the previous app. There were only twenty choices on the previous app. We picked the things that you most likely to call in, such as a, a tree that fell in the woods, you could, uh, pop all that kind of thing. Now you have basically the same three hundred something choices that a Three One operator has, so you would be able to go down a long, long list. Uh, Bud, just type in keywords, it's gonna narrow that list down so that you find what you're looking for. So I just wanna make y'all aware of that, anybody that needs assistance with that, got questions about it, I'll be there. Thank you.
Actually, one question, please. Who do you complain when one of the departments is not doing their job?
We do take, we have a general service request at Three One One specifically so that we can put in a complaint or a compliment to a department. So if you've got an issue with, we'll just say, uh, potholes not getting fixed, we keep reporting it, it could be that we're not reporting it properly, but, um, you know, may specifically say, I saw a problem, but they went to the wrong street, or they said they're not gonna fix it, those kind of things. Yes, we have the request that we can send to any department, and what, what happens is somebody from that department will contact you back. So we, we, I make a complaint, register a complaint list, we're gonna ask for your contacting.
And what happens when they don't contact you back and they just ignore your request?
That's another one. Uh, so we do what's called a quality request as well. And the quality request is the complaint has been made, you've taken it up to whatever level, and you haven't gotten a resolution. So let's say you, you've spoken to, even a supervisor, you spoke to me, and I was not able to resolve the issue, then you can do what's called a quality service request and forward up to speed to the Department of the Director.
I had that issue, as a matter of fact, you were with a, uh, code compliance gentleman that had a, city phone? He said, "Why are you calling with this phone?" "What? This is a city phone that you have." He was using it as a personal phone. And the phone was given to me by the city. The other situation is, is that, uh, that they say that they fixed the, the problem online, or they sent you an email, but the problem's not fixed.
That's why we created a quality service request specifically, and that's one of the nice things about our app, it gives you that follow-up now. So if you, if you just, you know, quickly enter that there's a pothole here, you'll get a reply back, it may be a day or two late, but it says the potholes can fix, and you've got seven, same potholes still sitting there, maybe we got the wrong one, whatever the issue may be, that's one of the reasons we created that.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Give me his, give me his card. Yes. I'm ready. Thank you.
Me too, please.
Um, I want to remind everyone, everybody, uh, the staff in the back is reminding, these two papers, uh, sheets, please fill them out and submit it to staff. I want to say thank you so much for your time, 'cause it's almost eight-thirty. You don't have, you can be anywhere, but you cannot to provide your input to us to help us be a better city for you. I, I do, uh, want to thank you for your time and for being so patient, and for all the city staff that gets you at seven o'clock in the morning and you're still here at eight-thirty. Thank y'all, I know that's a lot, and I appreciate you coming in to help to make sure that we're responsive to, to the citizens. So with that, if there's nothing else for me, oh, one more. The development that's coming into the neighborhood, especially the Oak Cliff area, or anyone governing over these contracts that's coming out and building these homes, they supposed to be low income. There's a house being built next door to my church. That thing is worth a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. How are y'all watching over how they're placing these amounts on these homes? They're supposed to be low income, but compared to some, with the money that, that, that people making, they, they will not be able to afford that house.
Mr. Kenny, make sure you're just on here.
So, so a, a couple points. Uh, number one, um, any home that is, is built in the city is, uh, inspected by our building department, right? They go manage that the home that is, is, is up to code and is meeting city standards. In terms of, um, homes serving a particular group, it, it depends on whether the city is investing in that home or not, right? Um, I don't know it, or don't know that project, but, um, if, if one of our departments, because it's not just the Department of Housing that invests in housing, it's also Economic Development that's invested in housing, and, um, the, the Dallas Housing Authority that, that builds housing, um, so I'm, I'm not sure who is building that, that project. Certainly, if, if, um, the city has a stake in it, then, then, um, someone is, is, um, tracking it and now, uh, monitoring it.
And also, when does building inspection come out? Even with that house being built, just looking at the setbacks of the, of the house, the way it's built, it shouldn't have passed. This, this house was their building. It's, uh, about ten feet from our property, but it's.
Right.
There's no walking room on the other side.
Gotcha.
They're cutting the trees down, but there's no walking room. If that, whoever purchases those, the concrete that they left, they left the whole trunk, so those roofs are gonna go up underneath that home. So you are resetting this home, or if they purchase it, up for ferry.
Right.
So I don't know when do building inspection come out to inspect it to make sure that house is up to code before they start selling it.
Right, so that's, so, so that, that's something, if there's, if there's a complaint, you had, um, contact Three One One?
Uh, already, I, I've seen, the inspector came out and they put trash in front of their house at forty-three eleven, our church is at forty-three oh-three. They go, they gave us the violation ticket, and the trash is in front of forty-three eleven. Telling us if we don't move it, they're gonna give us a, a two thousand dollar fine.
Yeah, yeah, we, we, we can take the address and, and, um, pass it on to that department.
Okay. Forty-three eleven, Aztec Drive, A-Z-T-E-C.
What department should she, what department?
Sustainable Development is, is the department that oversees building inspection.
Absolutely, just if we have sustainable, but we will, we can take your information, and, uh, she had the address, but we'll get your information and lease forward your information to Sustainable Development. Can, um, someone get her information, make sure? Oh, she did, thank you. Are there, if there, if there's nothing else, we go adjourn, staff is gonna stay around to answer any other questions or something you may not have wanted to come up to the mic, but we'll be here for you. And if there's anything else you need, we're gonna be here for a while, and please make sure you give to one of us, and we'll do what we can to help. And again, thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
This is William, hopefully your favorite videographer from Two Hacks Publishing. I hope you enjoyed this video. If you like it, please leave comments below, or like, follow, or subscribe to us and get notices of all our videos. We love it, even when you call.